All right. So I call to order the September 11th, 2018 School Board Regular Meeting. Ms. Madam Clerk, if you'll allow the minutes to reflect that all members of the School Board are present this evening with the exception of Mr. Conca. We're joined by Dr. Jones as well as our new student liaison, Ms. Jordan Winnell. And we welcomed you at our workshop and we welcome you again. Encourage you to enjoy your new role, actively participate in the meeting, share with us the thoughts of, your thoughts and the thoughts of your students. And again, just enjoy this opportunity and we appreciate your time and your engagement, your willingness to serve in this role. So, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, we will open with our Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Ms. Ayers, followed by an invocation led by Mr. Cole. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time of year and we give you special thanks for the men and women who serve us in the armed forces and as public servants, as firemen and policemen and EMTs, as we remember today, September 11th, and the events that happened to this country. We also ask that you bless and guide us in our work as School Board members. And we ask that we also, also ask your blessings on all of our citizens, that we may always prove ourselves mindful of the many favors that you have bestowed upon us and also always willing to do what you ask. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. All right, thank you, Ms. Ayers and Mr. Cole. And that brings us to the approval of the draft agenda for the meeting this evening. Do any members have revisions, changes, additions to the draft agenda proposed for this meeting?
I do have an amendment, and that would be to add 3B, which is a 9/11 remembrance video.
Okay. So we have a, have an addition of item 3B, a video remembering the events of 9/11.
You need a second then? Second?
That's a motion. We have a second, all in favor of, what, we, we need a single vote on the draft agenda. So I think we can, are there any other changes we need?
We have to do, we have to make, approve the motion to change first and then we can do that.
All right. Well, we have a motion, all right, I follow. Do we have a motion, a second then, all in favor of Ms. Ayers' motion to amend the draft agenda? Please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. So we now have in front of us a, an amended draft agenda that adds item 3B, the video in remembrance of 9/11. Is there any other changes necessary? Are there any other changes necessary?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right, we have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor approving the amended draft agenda. Please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. All right. Approval of the minutes. My apologies, my computer is locked up here for some reason. All right. Is there a motion regarding the minutes or any changes, revisions necessary to the minutes as presented for us?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, there is a kind of correction on September, September, on the August 1st, the regular School Board meeting minutes for August 7th. There was a statement in there that we were going to approve some policies in September and we approved them in August. It's just, the minutes are what they are, that's what we said, but, but we probably need to put a note in there that those, those policies were actually approved at another date. So, the minutes are fine, I just want to make that note. And if it's a board's pleasure, we can ask Michelle to insert a line somewhere at the bottom of those minutes, or asterisks or something, that those minutes were actually approved August 28th rather than...
And I have no problem with that proposal. Can you tell me again which set of minutes we need to revise in that fashion though?
September 11th minutes, August, August 7th minutes. It is on page four or five of that. It says, "Dr. Jones, Sheriff of the School Board, the following revised School Board policies and that they'd be recommended for approval in September." I don't have, but it's in there, it's in that, I've got it. I sent Michelle a copy of it.
Okay.
I did, so I'll go back to here. So it must have been the workshop. Okay, just leave a line. If I see it again, I'll fix it. I'll ask Michelle, because it looks like she's changed it.
I think, is it on page seven of the actual minutes? I mean, it looks like it's, it looks like I'm seeing it, oh, two of seven, page two of seven, revised VSBA School Board policies. Is that what you're talking about?
Your email to Michelle says August 4th on page five.
Yeah.
August.
I don't know whether it's the regular one or...
Oh, there, is that it? Page five of the, of the workshop.
Workshop.
It says, "Dr. Jones stated that these policies are being revised because of person..." No? Person, that's not it, that's the personnel change.
So we have that one, the August 28th.
Yeah, that's, that's not it. Go ahead, what was going to improve, you know, I don't know where it is now, it looks like she's changed it to me.
She did not change it, because she said she knew that it was a, that it was not what happened, but she had to print the minutes as what I misspoke.
Oh.
Dr. Jones misstated that the policies would be approved in September. Maybe that should be the change.
That be noted at the bottom?
Yes.
Let me say, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to vote on this if we're not clear on exactly what's supposed to be there.
The minutes are fine, we can, you know...
Minutes are accurate is what's said, it was just I misspoke with the date.
Okay. Okay.
So that being said...
Is it the bottom of page six by any chance? That refers to September anyway, that search for September. But that's talking about a ceremony, not, not minute, or not policies. No, that's not going to be it. Okay, when I reviewed them, I didn't have a problem with them necessarily, but I missed what you're talking about, so. All right, what's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll make a motion to accept approval of the amendment.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second. So the matter's in front of the Board. Mr. Cole, are you satisfied you're the individual brought to your floor?
I'm satisfied, you know, the minutes are accurate is what we said, it was just it was the wrong date. Even though I pulled the quote and sent it to Michelle, I can't find it where I pulled it.
Okay, well, we have a motion, a second properly before the Board. All in favor of the motion, a second, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. All right, that takes us to review of bill and receipts. Any discussion regarding bill and receipts? All right, no comment, no questions? All right, takes us to our first public comment period of the evening. This is an opportunity for individuals, delegations wishing to address the Board to come forward and be heard. There is a time limit for this public comment period of three minutes per individual and five minutes per group, with a total time limit of 30 minutes. Again, this is public comment period, we would welcome individuals that would like to address the Board. We'd ask that you address your comments to the Board as a whole, not to an individual Board member. So public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe that takes us to our first presentation of the meeting.
Yes, sir. We have a presentation, as we typically do in the first meeting in September, on our opening of the school year. I believe Mr. Johns is going to start off and talk a little bit about transportation and our school food service transition as well, with some comments. And then Dr. Amahundro is going to have a video for us and also talk a little bit about instructional opening. Mr. Johns?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Starting off with the transportation report, you know, we had elementary attendance on realignments this year. Ms. Gwaltney and her staff worked very hard over the summer to prepare those routes and all that kind of stuff. A key component of the success of the transportation operation, obviously, is our drivers. And we did start off this year with a full staff of drivers and that's really good news. They've worked very hard over the last few years in trying to recruit drivers, make changes in our testing, and that we're a testing site and those type things, so that we can put them through the training and get them on the road faster. Over the summer, we had a bus parked at Walmart with a banner on it. We're using, now, when we have a driver that has to park a bus during the day, for example, at Food Line, we're putting a banner on there and so forth. And marched in the Labor Day Parade, got three candidates as a result of that. We currently have five drivers in Phase One of the training and three in Phase Two, the behind, behind the wheel phase. So we expect to have those drivers finished. As we started off this year, out of our pool of substitutes, we've had to use five of them to put on routes, so we're down to just three dedicated driver, dedicated substitutes. And we have three more that are available occasionally. So we really are anxious to get this new class completed and certified, so that we have a pool, you know, more than just three deep. Now, the first week of school, we did have some late buses as we typically do. And, you know, those times and so forth have stabilized a little bit, you know, out of the, after the first several days. We had a couple of maintenance issues the first week. We had two buses that did not start on Tuesday morning. Those were jumped off and they, those routes were not late, because those jumps were done, jump starts were done early. We had another bus with a flat, a bus with a transportation issue, one with a brake issue, one with coolant problems. The garage took spares out, spare buses out to those routes, so while some of them caused the delay, the delay wasn't really, really long. Those type of breakdowns are in any given typical week. It's not, you know, I mean, those are the things that happen throughout the year for us. Our all-clear times in the afternoon have gotten better each day. And so we're down now to clearing all the buses about 4:45 to 4:50, so that's where we are with that. We did, and we are as of yesterday, still having about seven buses that their routes are running a little bit over an hour. One is like an hour and five minutes and a couple are an hour and 20 minutes. While we're looking at those routes and working with those drivers to try and get those routes down, and for example, this afternoon, one of those, it was an hour and 20, cleared at 58 minutes. One that was an hour and 18 minutes, cleared at hour and four minutes. And while we realize that some of these routes are inherently going to be long because of the size of the county and the fact that there's one high school and one middle school, we still are wanting to make them better. And so we're still looking at those to see what we can do with those, if we can. And as I said, we're meeting with drivers now to individually make some adjustments if we can. We did, the first day at the new middle school, had a little bit of a traffic jam, because we started off with all of our buses exiting on the eastern exit. And so we switched that to where the buses that had to go west, exit on the western exit, and the ones that need to go east, exit on that. We also had two deputies out there to help control that. And so that change, you know, allowed us to get those buses out of the middle school in a real timely manner, and that worked out good. Also made some adjustments to the Pocahontas Elementary School lineup, in that we've got some staff that are parking in the bus loop there in that middle parking lot. And so some changes were made that were tested this afternoon, so that we can get those buses loaded and moved out a little earlier. Now, one of the measurements that I look at each year is how many phone calls and emails and things like that, that the transportation staff gets, and how many of those filter up to me. This year, I had one email filter up to me. I had one phone call that I took simply because the person couldn't get to, into the phone at transportation. And so that's pretty good from my standpoint. Initially, the calls at transportation were really high the week before school, as well as the first day. And, you know, remind the Board that, you know, we do have, did hire a second dispatcher to help with those calls. By the second day, those calls had dropped dramatically, and by the end of the week, I mean, it was pretty, pretty quiet, you know, on the phone calls. And so I think that that is a good measurement of, you know, the, I mean, we start off each year and there's, you know, drivers learning their routes, the students learning their routes, and, you know, things like that. But, you know, it's smoothed out really quickly. And, you know, I'm just glad that I work in Powhatan and not, you know, with one of our neighbors nearby. And so, are there questions? And I've got some specific questions from the Gwaltneys here, I'd also help answer those.
All right. Dr. Jones?
I, I just want to say, I think that transportation has done a nice job, especially considering the changes that we've made in, in routing and the redistricting changes that we made. This is really a two-phase approach to beginning the year. The first phase is getting the buses into the schools and out of the schools in a timely fashion. You know, we had a new school open up with a new configuration that took some time. We made some tweaks too. And it always takes longer the first week, especially at the elementary level, with getting kids on the bus, making sure they're on the right bus, making sure that their number is legible, so we can get them on the right bus, and that takes extra time. We're now entering Phase Two, where we're going to look specifically at the seven buses that we have that have been at an hour or over an hour, and we'll be attacking how we can best solve those issues. We're going to do everything that we can to get them under an hour. And if it, as we talked about at the last meeting, if we're not able to do that with our current resources, we may come back to the Board with some proposals about how we can get that done. And we would anticipate we'll be able to do that by the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Questions for either Dr. Jones or Mr. Johns? Ms. Emble?
So, Dr. Jones, so by the next meeting, the new time, the refining would be done? Is that correct?
We, we, we work on it every day. So, but what we're going to do is, we're going to do everything that we can by, in the next week or so. And if there are, if we can't get it below an hour, we will be coming to the Board with a proposal of how we can do that, which may mean hiring additional staff, looking at how we use our buses or other vehicles to do that.
At the next meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, excuse me.
Okay. And then, how will we be communicating that to the, to the parents? Will that school messenger or would that be individual students that are involved?
Any changes that we're going to make?
Yes.
I'll let Ms. Gwaltney handle that, or Mr. Johns?
Yes, we have bus drivers communicate with the parents all along, and as these times have been tweaked during this first week, those drivers will communicate with the parents. And so, but, and if we were to split a route, because we hired another driver, we would communicate with those specific parents that are impacted. Is there anything else you'd want to add to that?
Just, just that. If we were to split a route or change routes or move students from route, one route to another, we would do that with a letter in advance to the, to the parents and let them know what day that would be effective.
Okay.
Typically, we do that in the afternoon when the children go home, not for the next day, but typically that's news we share in the afternoon. It seems to get home better. But we would do that in writing, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you for that information.
You done, Ms. Emble?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, so you, any other questions? All right, so we haven't talked a lot about the elementary schools. Any problems with the elementary schools as far as their routes, times, that sort of thing?
Not really, and I, I'm glad you asked the question, because it made me remember something that I wanted to say. Those routes that are taken over an hour are not a result of the realignment. Those routes are some routes that we've had problems with in the past, and so it's not a realignment issue with those.
Okay. All right, so our elementary schools have adjusted the realignment in terms of the length of the bus rides, nothing new that's been caused by that realignment. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right, and is our instruction, are our instructional days at the five schools they starting on time, even though we're having some challenges with parking and, or rather, with traffic?
Well, the traffic issue at the middle school was resolved. I mean, that's running smoothly now. And the issue at the, at Pocahontas Elementary was only loading in the afternoon, it was in getting the buses out quickly. It wasn't dropping them off in the morning. It was loading in the afternoon.
Okay, and I agree with you that the two deputies made a significant impact when you brought them in to help with traffic direction. Are they going to be there at the middle school as we move forward?
Well, we hope they are. And we had to at the old middle school last year, but not every day. I mean, if something comes up, they're not there. But in spite of that, you know, with the buses, you know, when you split the buses and they're going in the direction they have to, it makes the traffic flow quicker, because you're not clogging up just one area with one bus trying to go one way. And so it, I think it'll work smooth without a deputy, but not as smooth. I mean, we do need the two deputies there.
Okay. Other questions?
It'll just take a little while for the people to realize that this is a place to avoid at 3:25, no, 2:25, so, you know.
I think it's the 7:30 piece, it's a little, a little tougher probably.
All right, avoid it in the morning then.
Mr. Cole, you were going to make a comment, sir?
Just, I think I asked early in private, and just want to reiterate that parent pickup is going better now. A parent drop off in the morning is going, and pickup is going better in the afternoon.
I think so, but I don't know if any principal wants to chime in, but...
I'll answer on behalf of Dr. Martin in the mornings. It's going much better from my perspective, dropping off my youngest son. I think the first day was a little tough, but the staff was out there, they weathered it well, and I think at this point, to me, it seems like it's going quite well. And if, if you want to answer that differently, Dr. Martin, you're welcome to do that.
No, it's because we've gotten it down to about 10 minutes.
Okay.
For drop off. Yes, there is a traffic backup, but that's going to happen for that 10 minutes. We are looking at some other things in the parking lot, just for traffic for parents entering and exiting.
Okay.
And I will say, the school that we were, thank you, sir. School that I was most concerned about with the middle school, of course, because it's new, but also Pocahontas Elementary, because we've added additional students there. And I was over there two mornings last week, and I was pleasantly surprised how quick it went, and the backups weren't any longer than previous years. And in fact, by the third day, they may have been less than they have been in previous years. So I don't know if it's just more kids riding the bus and the new kids are all riding the buses, but that was the school I was most concerned with, and it's been very, very smooth.
Yeah, and I, I agree that a lot of our discussion has seemed to be focused on the middle school, only because it's new, but I don't want to leave out the staff from the other schools. I think that it appears to me as a parent that that's probably one of the more challenging aspects of the day, is getting all the students into the building, into the right places. And it seems like it's going quite well. So to the leadership of all the schools, I certainly offer my thanks and congratulations on what appears to be something that's going quite well, so, thank you. Any last comments or questions for Mr. Johns or Ms. Gwaltney or Dr. Jones? All right. Dr. Jones, I believe you have another presentation for us, amended agenda?
Yeah, we've got the, Dr. Amahundro is going to speak about, has a little video on the opening week and talk a little bit about instructionally.
I didn't make any comments on food service, I forgot all about that, but, you know, that's going well. I mean, everybody's got to make some adjustments and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, we plan to have SEDEXO representative come to the next meeting in October and do a little presentation to give you numbers, you know, on things. But, you know, many of us have gone out and ate, eaten in cafeterias, ate in the middle school today. It was good, I enjoyed it. I heard staff, you know, making good, positive comments, and kids too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johns.
Thank you, sir.
So that, does that mean that...
Ms. Emble, I'm sorry.
Does that mean that we should probably go and, and have lunch there at one of the schools? Or, because they're all, through all the schools, not just...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I want to talk a little bit about the instructional component of the start of the school year, and we certainly do a lot of things behind the scenes prior to the start of the school year to get ready. So one of the things that we do over the summer is our professional development with our staff. We spent three days throughout the summer providing morning professional development for teachers who wanted to participate in professional development that would free them up during the regular teacher service week, so that they could do things in their classroom. And that focus was on deeper learning, our DL 421 program, as well as writing across the curriculum. We also, for professional development this year, offered several of our modules online, so that teachers could do them anytime, anywhere, so that they would have some flexibility in how they completed those professional development opportunities. And then we also used, our elementary schools have been doing this for several years, but really have kind of turned the focus of our student day-to-days that were occurring during the summer and really turned them into student success summits, where they did some planning for the school year in the elementary, at the elementary level. Human Resources, excuse me, Human Resources was busy getting ready for school as well. We are 34 new teachers this year and 87 total employees. As we usually do, we spent some summer getting, some of the time in the summer getting ready with those new teachers, so they had an early August session where they got to do the tour through Powhatan. They used Down Under Limo for a bus tour throughout Powhatan, which is always a big hit with our new teachers. They got to eat lunch with their mentor, and then they received some support for technology. Then prior to the regular teachers coming back, they came a little early, and they got three additional days where they had orientation largely at the middle school in the mornings, and then got to go to their classrooms in their schools, so that they could get ready before their peers came back for teacher work week. Also, the HR department does a fantastic job, not just Dr. Parker, but her entire support staff in getting those new teachers ready, and always have nice treats for them. They got duffel bags this year and some back-to-school goodies and tumblers, so it was a great experience for them. Also, one of the other transitions that happened with HR and getting ready for school was SEDEXO, and we had several school food service employees that had been our employees that now are employed by SEDEXO. So our staff had to make sure that they went through the proper training and paperwork to get transitioned to that new program. From an instructional side, some things that we did to get prepared for the school year, we do curriculum writing during the summer, and we did that in several content areas, but we also did it around performance-based assessment. Dr. Jones mentioned that earlier when we were talking about strategic plan, but performance-based assessment is something new to many of our secondary teachers, or newer to some, some of our secondary teachers, so we had a focus on that for our curriculum writing this summer. And they are continuing to use Schoology as our warehouse for that curriculum. And then we rolled into pre-service week, when all of our teachers came back. And of course, we officially opened Powhatan Middle School, and at the end of the week, we allowed the other staff throughout the division come and take a look at the middle school if they, if they so desired. We, this year, did our orientation nights all in the evening. So elementary school used to do them during the daytime, we pushed them to the late afternoon and evening. We thought that that would give parents a better opportunity, working parents, to come in and to be able to participate without having to take such significant time off of work, and that was well-received. We utilized SEDEXO during teacher work week to give meals to the staff, whether it was breakfast or lunches at most of our schools. Also, over at the high school, they had a single night for Feenite. Many times, they've split that up into two nights. They did that in one night this year, and we also utilized an online form system for the first time at the high school. And then the middle school conducted their sixth grade orientation, which was a huge hit, and I think we had almost every sixth grader in attendance, as well as lots of parents there. So it was a fun rowdy crowd that day. And then we rolled into our first week, and on Tuesday, we had everybody, all hands on deck on Tuesday. We really had focused on innovation and talking about innovation at our curriculum close-up over the summer and different professional developments, and that showed in that first week of school. We had STEM lessons at the elementary school already starting the year. We had hyperdocs that... We had hyperdocs that our middle school teachers were starting to learn. We had our elementary teachers using Seesaw and Twitter, which was a, Seesaw was a new system that they were using this year for communication with parents. We introduced some math workshop programs, and we are starting our second year of our English 12 and Government course. So lots of great things to just really kick off the school year and to be innovative in our, in our buildings. We also, during that first week, spent some time doing PBIS expectations to make sure that students understand what the processes and the procedures and the routines are in the classroom and in the building, whether it's in hallways or in the cafeteria or during assemblies. And that way, we can really focus on instruction throughout the year because students know what the expectations and the procedures are. Chromebooks were rolled out to the high school students prior to getting there, and the middle school students are getting them this week. So we had our first round of students receive them today, and we anticipate most of them will have them by Thursday. There might be a few sixth graders that don't have them, but they'll have them on Friday. So most of the middle schoolers will have them in the next few days. And then athletics and activities have already kicked off. We've had football games. We've also had ACE, our academic team, start with practice at the middle school. So things are in full swing both during the school day and after the, after school at our schools. And last year, we had about 4,368 students unofficially. This year, we have 4,339 unofficially. So a few, fewer students, but we will have our formal count, our official count for ADM on September 30th, and that will have our final results for how many students we have.
Could you repeat the numbers again, please?
Sure. So last year, at this time, we were at 4,368, and this year, we're at 4,339.
Thank you.
And just a quick little video presentation. I don't know if there's any questions that you all may have, though, before we roll the two-minute video.
Questions from any of the members for Dr. Omahundro? All right. Please proceed.
Okay.
Oh, can we clap?
Nice job.
That's very good.
All right. Very nicely done. All right, Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one additional quick video that we're going to show. As everybody knows, Mr. Cole referenced earlier, today being 9/11, we had activities at all of our schools for educating our students. The Freedom Flag, which the school board adopted a couple of years ago, was flown in, outside of our buildings today. And the video that we're getting ready to show is, was shot at the high school, which is one of the activities that the high school did today to raise the Freedom Flag and have students participate in that. So I wanted to show you this video that they produced. They then took this video and during Indian time, I think, showed it to all the classes and had some discussion about 9/11 as a day in history and what its meaning and the sanctity of this day. So all the schools, I think, did a really nice job, but just wanted to highlight this video and show it to the board.
On September 11, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. In response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. Community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of September 11 as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. The Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21st, 2009, directed September 11 to be observed and recognized as the annual national day of service and remembrance, and charged the corporation of national and community service with leading this nationwide effort. Participation in service and remembrance activities on September 11 is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service, and honor those who continue to serve our country today, including active duty and reserve soldiers and their families, veterans, and first responders. At this time, please join me for a moment of silence in honor of those who lost their lives during the attacks of September 11, 2001, and those who lost their lives from the service they gave as a result.
Present. Up.
Everyone, I just want to thank you all for coming out and being a part of this tribute today. You'll notice to the left of the American flag is the Freedom Flag, which was adopted in the Commonwealth of Virginia by the General Assembly. You'll notice that the Pentagon is part of the flag, signifying the effect that took place here in our Commonwealth. At this time, I want to thank everybody for coming out and modeling what it means to be an Indian and to be respectful.
All right. Very nicely done.
Thank you, and thanks to the high school for putting that together. And as I said, this is one video from one of our schools, but I know all of our schools had some wonderful activities going on today, working with their students, and we just wanted to highlight what we're doing to help remember this very important day. Thank you.
I think it's very important. I appreciate your efforts in doing that. Does any board members have comments before we move into the recognition? All right, Dr. Jones, I believe we're doing a recognition this evening.
Yep, we have one important recognition today. The board will join me on the floor, and Dr. Omahundro is going to introduce our person who's getting recognized.
Good evening. Each year, the Virginia Association for the Gifted gives an Outstanding Student Award to only two students, one in elementary and one in secondary. This year, Mrs. Lori Wolf, our gifted resource teacher at Flat Rock Elementary, recommended Kira Kenyer. We are proud to recognize Kira, who will receive the Elementary Outstanding Student Award later this fall at the annual seminar for the Virginia Association for the Gifted. According to Ms. Wolf, Kira is not only bright academically, but she's also very talented. As a dancer, and only when she was in fourth grade, Kira choreographed a dance for the SOL pep rally at Flat Rock. In addition to her outstanding work in the gifted program at Flat Rock, Kira also has spent several summers at the UVA Residential Gifted Program. This has sparked an interest in her studying architecture and interior design. We'd like to thank Ms. Wolf for her support of our students and congratulate Kira on her well-deserved award. She is a sixth grader this year at Powhatan Middle School. Come on forward. And Dr. Jones, Kira is here with her mother and father and her two younger brothers who are wearing their collared shirts in honor of Kira, all dressed up tonight.
All right. Always nice to recognize these students and their significant accomplishments.
Absolutely.
All right, Dr. Jones, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda, sir?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda, which we're asking for approval as a block, we have the monthly financial reports, our CIP financial report, the facility usage report for all of our facilities. We have an overnight field trip that I believe our school board liaison is attending and representing Powhatan up in Massachusetts. And then we have some donations at the personnel docket and addendum, and we're looking for approval of the consent agenda.
All right. So unless there are individual questions about any of these items, we would look for a motion to approve them in a block. Any discussion or questions about any individual item? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve the items in a block? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as a block? Please respond with a aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you very much. Next item is school board representatives for governor schools, Code RBA, another regional program, and the school board's advisory committees. We've listed the eight different schools or advisory committees that are, that we currently have in existence and listed the current school board rep and an alternate if applicable, and giving this to the board to consider any changes they may want to make this year or rotations, and if not, looking for approval as many of these committees and groups are getting started again for the new school year.
All right. So would be appropriate openness for discussion. So is there discussion or comment? How would you like to move through these?
Well, I'm good with mine individually.
All right. Was there anyone that would like to, is there anyone that would like to step off of one of these and go to a different one?
I'm good with what I represent, but we do need an alternate for Code RBA.
Okay.
Which it might, if Mr. Kunkka is still for Maggie Walker, because one, Code RBA meets immediately following Maggie Walker's meeting. So that might be the logical person to ask to do that.
Okay.
Or since he's not here, just put him on it.
Since he's not here, we could just congratulate him.
Yes.
He's already the alternate at Appomattox.
Well, he is at Maggie Walker.
And I had, I was the primary for Math Science Innovation. That's not, not one of our boards any longer. I'm, and I only serve at this, I served on two. I serve on one at this point, which is the CTE Board or Committee. I would like to continue to serve on that committee, but I'm happy to step into another one if that helps. I would be glad to, and there's definitely a logic to what you talked about with Code RBA and Maggie Walker. I'm happy to serve on a different board if that would, would help someone.
Do you, are you working, do you work, if you don't mind me asking, do you work downtown already anyway? If I couldn't...
I would definitely need to be an alternate.
That's what I'm saying.
My work schedule is pretty busy, but...
Yeah, that, no, that's what I'm, I'm asking, if you would take over maybe the alternate for, I mean, I don't think, Dr. Jones, I don't think I've really ever been asked.
I don't know that you missed a meeting.
They're kind of my, my passions, but...
Actually, I filled in once for you for Maggie Walker.
You did. You did. You absolutely did.
So I'm happy to serve in, on, as either the alternate for Maggie Walker or Code RBA.
Well, how about both? Because like I said, they meet back-to-back on that day. Or it's, I don't think Mr. Kunkka would have an objection to that.
That would still leave Mr. Kunkka with two. That would leave him with Appomattox as an alternate and Title I if we leave him as it currently is.
Okay.
And I have heard, not heard from Mr. Kunkka regarding his preferences for these committees, so I would assume he still is inclined to serve as he's currently assigned. I'm happy to do that if that's what the board would like. Does anyone else feel compelled, they'd like to serve as an alternate for either Maggie Walker or Code RBA?
Unless I'm, you know, I'm always willing to share Appomattox Regional Government School with somebody. You know, just, and once again, just point out that there is a lot of value in being on one of these regional board meetings because you do learn a lot about that, you can become a better advocate and more informed for it. a better advocate and more informed for it. Also, it's an opportunity to collaborate with colleagues, so.
Okay.
I've learned a lot being at Appomattox, and like I say, I'm willing to do it, but I'm certainly willing to let somebody else take it, because I think it is a very beneficial experience.
All right. Any discussion, comment? So I believe as we're sort of situated now, I have agreed to replace Mr. Kunkka as the alternate for Maggie Walker and for, and we needed an alternate, so I've agreed to serve as the alternate for Code RBA.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think we left everything else as it was. Is that correct?
That's what I got.
What I will say is, I will, and I'm prepared to vote on that tonight as we just discussed, but what I would say to the board is that I will contact Mr. Kunkka, and if he feels strongly that he would like to remain as the alternate for Maggie Walker, I'm happy to bring this item back to this board, and we can certainly change it back. I don't want him to feel that we're taking away a position that he feels inclined to serve in. But I suppose unless there's further discussion, do we have a motion to approve it in the fashion I described?
Make a motion to approve the board representatives of committees and governor schools.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. So all in favor of approving the list with the two amendments that we discussed, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is the 2017-2018 School Board Advisory Committees. We have a couple of, we've begun that process of soliciting community members to be part of the advisory committees, and we have our first few names on the Special Education Advisory Committee, four names. We'd ask for the board to approve those, and we will bring these to you at subsequent months as we begin to fill out these committees with community members who want to get involved in the various topics.
All right, and I have no problem with any of these individuals, certainly, but I would have a question. So we, are there any particular committees that, from time to time, I'm asked by individuals for, they're looking for volunteer activities. Are there any committees that we have had challenges in the past in getting representation for?
The Katie Wajikis raising her hand for school health advisory.
Okay.
Yep.
Any others?
We've had great participation with gifted advisory, special ed, career and technicals, very robust committee. Title I, Dr. Thomas, been good, so really that's the only one that seems to
Okay.
need members if you're asked for people who want to get involved.
I certainly will do that. It's great to have that kind of response, that we don't have a problem getting community engagement with these advisory committees, so. All right, so you need approval of the members that we have here, the beginning of the process.
Correct, the ones that are highlighted in orange, yes.
All right. Any discussion regarding these committees or the proposed membership? All right, we have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the four people listed for the 17-18 School Board Advisory Committee, Special Education Advisory Committee.
Ms. Emel, you, I may have misheard, it's 18-19, maybe I misunderstood you.
It's 18-19.
18-19.
Well, I'm sorry, it says 17-18, and I read that, it's 18-19.
Yeah, you're right. It's 17-18 on the left and 18-19 on the right, so, but it would be for the 18-18 School Board Advisory Committee.
This year. Thank you.
All right, so that's the motion. We have a second to Ms. Emel's motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of approving these four interested community members, grandparents, and other individuals? All in favor, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next item is to consider approval of the Head Start MOU agreement. Head Start, we have one classroom this year for three and four-year-olds combined at Poconnant Elementary School. The program is operated through Richmond Public Schools Head Start Program, but we work collaboratively with them to identify students and then provide services for students as part of our early childhood program, and we are asking for approval of this MOU.
All right. Questions, comments for Dr. Jones? Ms. Emel?
Did we, didn't we have two classes last year?
Yeah, and that was a decision that Richmond made to combine the classes into one class, and if the board, you'll remember, the rest of the board will remember, we added another VPI class as a result of, because we had the space then to do that, so we added another VPI class for four-year-olds.
So that's where the other, extra children, it wasn't because we didn't have enough students?
No, that was a decision that was made through Richmond, which administers the program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Head Start Annual Agreement.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you very much. Next item is to consider approval of, for Allied Instructional Services to provide orientation and mobility instruction for some of our students. This is a contracted service that we provide to some of our students that need it through IEP or 504 program.
All right. Discussion or comments?
This is only for orientation and mobility training, is that correct?
Yes.
On the application we have in our packet, that's not checked, so we might, I don't, this is a preliminary copy and not, but, so we may want to make sure that's done before we say...
Yeah, this is just the...
Just to let us know what it is.
Just the boilerplate of the agreement, but we will complete it, so we have board approval and make sure that's checked.
All right, other questions, comments?
Make a motion to accept.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much. Next item is recommended the school board approve the request for release for compulsory attendance for student case RE 18-19-11 and RE 18-19-12, based on religious belief of students as protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion in student case number RE 18-19-11 and RE 18-19-12?
I make a motion, we accept the release from compulsory attendance of student case RE 18-19-11 and RE 18-19-12.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much. And the last item that I have this evening is to consider approval of some VSBA School Board policies. These are three policies, ICID, School Year School Day, IJD, College and Career Readiness, and KNAG, that the board had some questions about at previous meetings. In the boilerplate, we have answers to those questions. In the case of KNAG, is new language that we inserted at the beginning of the policy, and then attached are all of the full policies, so that you can review them. In addition, there were two policies that were approved at, I believe it was our last meeting, GBB, Prohibition of Abusive Work Environments, and GBA, where the board approved them but had some questions. We provided some clarifying language in the boilerplate to answer those questions for the board as well. So that's included on here, since the board had asked questions about it last time, but we're asking for approval of ICID, IJD, and KNAG tonight, based on this additional information we've provided.
That's KNAG.
KNAG.
All right, and I appreciate the change to KNAG to make clear the intent of the policy as part of the board. All right, so any discussion regarding any of these three policies and the information provided, or the answers to the questions about GBB, GBA?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve these?
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries four zero. All right, that takes us to items for discussion, folks. So we'll do comments by the board, and that's going to include our follow-ups as we discussed at our last meeting. Ms. Winall, the floor is yours. Are you ready to offer us some comments? No is okay.
You've got to put her on the spot, she's never been here.
She's been prepped.
Yeah, now, I was going to say, I did ask that question, and asked that they explain to you exactly what this is, so, but still, if you don't have comments, that's okay.
The school year started off pretty good. It was really awesome today that we remembered 9/11 as a whole, as not just at my school, but at all the schools all over the place. That was kind of the biggest thing for me so far this year.
All right, very good. For your first public comment, or for your first comment period, that was excellent. You did a very nice job. All right. Ms. Ayers?
Just a couple things. Welcome back to everyone, and it looks like we had a wonderful start to the year, which is not surprising to me. So welcome back, everyone. Have a great year. Thank you to Sedexo for our meal tonight, because it was really, really good. And about 9/11, it's just when I woke up this morning, I was thinking, and I think we commented on this last year, that even our high school seniors were either newborn babies or weren't even born when this happened. And just the fact that we continue to make this such an important day in our history and remember it, it means a lot. It means a lot to a lot of people, that new people and, of course, all the heroes of that day. And just encourage people that if they haven't been to New York to see the memorial, that it is very emotional, and it is well worth the trip to go see that. So that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Nice. Ms. Emel?
Well, I want to say welcome to Ms. Jordan Winall. It's good to have you for our new student liaison this year.
Thank you.
Second, I would like to be signed up for the free webinar, What School Board Members Need to Know About School Bus Safety. And lots of my visits to the schools this year, lots of excitement. I have to say, especially at the middle school, all the schools that I visited were exciting, but it was good to see the smiles on the middle school teachers' faces, you know, after being in older buildings for so long. I'll just put it that way. Also, the meetings, lots of good feedback from parents about the meetings, the orientation meetings, the getting their schedules. I specifically heard a lot of parents say how excited they were that Dr. Martin said that there would be no cell phones out at school and to start your detox now. I thought that was nicely said, how she said it, and it was well received by all the parents that I have talked to. Also, the Chromebooks, excitement is coming in the air for the Chromebooks, both sixth graders, I mean, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and ninth graders. The water refilling stations are a big hit. That, I think that's good that we are showing the kids that we're recycling and that we have that at our schools, and I see that that's at many of the schools, not just the new middle school, even some of the elementaries. Lot of PTO meetings. Fine Creek Brewery for the high school PTO, the New Mexican Restaurant for the, El Jaret, I think is how you say it, for the middle school. I encourage lots of parents to get involved. It's not the PTO you think it was, or is, or it's the modern PTO. So, and thank you again for all the hard work on the strategic plan after the committee met, to the staff. Thank you very much for your hard work.
All right, thank you, Ms. Emel. Mr. Cole?
Just welcome back, and welcome, Ms. Winall.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to observe you in action before with the FFA, so we know we've got a good person here to serve, and thank you for volunteering to do that, and good luck next week, week after next in Massachusetts. When are you going?
This weekend. We leave Thursday morning.
Thursday morning.
Oh, wow. Soon.
Enjoy your trip.
Thank you, I will.
Hopefully you'll get out before the hurricane, but anyway. I do want to, at some point, as we move through the fall, to hear back from the middle school about how their desk allotment is going and how teachers are using that, and whether it's been positive or negative, and, because I feel very strongly that that's a good move, and I hope that it bears out at the middle school, because I'd like to see us budget to do some of that at other schools as we move along, if we see the evidence that it is working. So I look forward to that. The strategic plan, once we get it in a little bit more finalized fashion, and I think that's another topic for the board supervisors, to share that with them. And the last thing is, you know, with the auto, we did work a few years ago to get some people to go to the auto, to bus shop and work, but, you know, we have had a hard time getting that class to work, so we may want to look at, are there other things we need to do to encourage students to, in that class? It is an expensive class for them, because if they intend to take it, it's 10 credit hours, you know, over $100 a credit hour, so they're paying over $1,000 a year to get on the bus or to drive to Reynolds in the morning and then drive back in the middle of the day, so. Maybe there's some incentives, maybe there are some incentives, not only for that, but if there are other trades, even if we're going to Tyler, we may need to look at that, if that's truly something that's a part of our plan in the future. Good luck to everybody, I hope it's a great school year.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, a couple of comments. I wanted to compliment, I attended back-to-school night at the middle school, saw the high schools. I heard a lot of good, positive comments. The middle school particularly, I wanted to comment that I really liked the community groups being present at that back-to-school night, the different organizations for the children. We talked earlier in the evening about the importance of asking them to engage in the community, to volunteer, to participate in various things, and I think that that is modeling that idea that if we really want effective partnerships, we've got to reach out and collaborate. I think that that was very nicely done. I wanted to comment on one thing. It was interesting to hear Dr. Martin, she made the comment about that they needed to not plan on bringing their telephones, their cell phones. The parents all cheered, the students really not so much. So I would be curious to know how that goes as we sort of move into the school year. All right, well, that's good. All right, so that's good.
You go, you go.
The agenda for the 29th, what's planned for September 29th? If we could get a copy of that at some point, once you get that drafted for the board members, so we can sort of know what to expect. I'd also be interested to know what the response looks like on some of the invitations that we sent out.
Sure.
Also, I did want to compliment you, Dr. Jones. I saw you present at the openings for the schools, you attended the back-to-school nights, and if you're going to be a leader, you've got to be present, you've got to be in the game, and you did that. So thank you for being there, thank you for leading your staff, and, but to the staff, the faculty, the teachers, everyone that works in our schools, thank you for what you do. It would not be what it is without you. So it's not bricks and mortar, it's people. So thank you for your engagement, thank you for what you do. Dr. Jones?
Sure. I also want to thank everybody for a great start to the school year. It was as smooth as any that I can remember. We still have some tweaking that we need to do, but I was really impressed with the level of instruction that I saw in classrooms in all five of our buildings on day one and the days since then. So kudos to the teachers and the administrators for making that happen, and for the students for being engaged and buying into it, because that's why we do it. Second thing is, is on September 29th, as Mr. Walter says, we will have our dedication ceremony for the new middle school. We hope that as many members of the community as possible will attend. We're looking forward to it being a fun, festive day to celebrate what is really an important facility in our community, not just for schools, but for the community as a whole. And then finally, just to let the community know, we are keeping track of the weather, as I know everybody is, judging by the lines at the grocery stores and stuff, but we are tracking everything. We will, as we always do, keep student safety in mind first and foremost, and we'll make a decision on any closings that may need to occur, or canceling of after-school activities as soon as we are able to do so safely and with good information on what storm may hold for us. So we will do that in a timely fashion, and then we're watching it almost hourly to see what the storm's doing and making sure that we're prepared. We have been in communication with the county and with emergency responders and our emergency management system in the county to make sure that we're coordinating everything with them in the hopefully unlikely scenario that the storm heads north, we'll be prepared. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that takes us to our second public comment period of the meeting. This is an opportunity for individuals or groups to be heard by the board. There's a time limit, one minute per individual or three minutes per group, with a 15-minute total time limit. Public comment period is open. We would ask that any speakers address their comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. We would ask that any speakers address their comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring the public comment period to a close. Next item on our agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I motion, we adjourn.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.